Board Secretary, please let the record show that all board members except Scott Christ and Dr. Mohammed Kani is present, but Scott is participating via Zoom. So we can give Scott a... Hi, Scott. Can you hear us?
I can hear you there.
Hello.
Hello.
You're with us via Zoom. So, thank you. We'll move on to our meeting, Section 1.02, Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Communication Officer, Officer Mr. Stephen Hall will introduce students from STUDY to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Tonight, we will welcome a group of students from STUDY Alternative Center who participate in the JAG program. They will be leading the Pledge of Allegiance, but first they have a special presentation. Students, we invite you to come forward, please, as we call your names. We have Cody Anson, Mackenzie Luke, Jalen Rivers, Zanaya Shade, and Desiree Swinney. All come forward, please. Feel free, if you want to come over here on this side. And then, we also invite their teacher, Chris Looney, and their principal, Nicole Davis, to come forward. Mr. Looney, we would love for you to share with us a little about JAG and the project that your students are currently working on.
So my name's Chris Looney. I'm the JAG specialist at STUDY High School. And JAG is meant to prepare students for life after high school. One of the things that we do at STUDY is a printing emporium where we make shirts, hats, signs, and cups, all sorts of neat and interesting things. A couple months ago, Dr. Lathan was invited to a meeting where she was asked to wear a jersey from her favorite team. Everyone in this room knows that Dr. Lathan's favorite team is SPS. So they reached out to us at STUDY and they asked us if we would please make Dr. Lathan a one-of-a-kind jersey that represented her favorite team. So our students in our fourth block class have put this together for you.
Oh, neat.
On the front, we have all six of the high schools in Springfield. Team SPS.
So I'm standing at a winner's leadership conference, and so I will be representing Team SPS.
That's great. Ready, go. Three, two, three.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. But you didn't bring any soup today. Thank you all. Thank you.
All right. We invite everyone who's able to stand, please, to join us. And students, whenever you're ready, please face the flag and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Students, as well as teachers, if you could come over here, please. We want to get one more photo of Dr. Lathan and Dr. Frederick, please. If you want to just get in the middle there, we'll get the Springfield Public Schools in the background.
Everybody look in here.
That's great. Thank you so much, students. We appreciate you very much. We will continue this evening with honoring excellence, and we're very pleased to feature the winner of this year's Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest. In partnership with the Springfield NAACP, each year Springfield Public Schools hosts a variety of events that focus on the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. One of those activities is an essay contest, and this year Cadence Gregory was selected as the winner. Cadence, would you please come forward? I'm going to brag on you for just a few minutes. Cadence is a sixth grader at Carver Middle School, and she is accompanied tonight by her mother, Crystal, as well as her principal, Dr. Dana Powers. The essay that Cadence wrote is entitled "A Life for Everyone," and it was inspired by Dr. King's "I Have a Dream" speech. Cadence's dream is to find a solution to help those who are unsheltered. In her essay, she states, quote, "Housing the unsheltered will give them an advantage to get their pride back, work hard, and remain sheltered. I want to be able to find people who agree with me and help me raise money." It's beautiful. Thank you for sharing those words. And please congratulate Cadence on winning the trophy. We also have members of the NAACP's Executive Council. We would like for them to come forward, please, and be a part of the recognition. Would you like to say anything? Part of that? Okay. Love to get you in the photo.
I know, for once.
These scoops just like, just a little. Cadence, why don't you step forward, all the way? There you go. There we go.
I'm going to take one for Dr. Powers, right here, okay? Thank you. Congratulations. And now, we are pleased to recognize the Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year. We have the honor of recognizing two students from Parkview High School who were recently honored by the Boys and Girls Clubs. Tyvon Huddleston and Cherokee White, would you both please come forward? All right. For the third time in four years, a Parkview student has been named Boys and Girls Club of the Year for Springfield Youth. Tyvon is a senior and follows in the footsteps of former PHS students who won this award in 2020 and 2021. Tyvon has been an active member of the Stallmaker and Musgrove Units, where he has served as a peer-to-peer mentor and a mentee. He was selected based on his leadership, service, academic excellence, and dedication to live a healthy lifestyle. With this recognition, Tyvon was awarded a $16,000 scholarship and the opportunity to compete for Missouri Youth of the Year later this spring. Congratulations. Cherokee is also a senior, and she received a $2,000 scholarship sponsored by Wataburger, which will help with her college expenses. Tyvon and Cherokee are supported tonight by their school counselor, Mr. Jeremy Wilson, and assistant principal, Mrs. Megan Brown. Would you please stand, please? We congratulate you both. If you'd like to say anything, share anything, you're certainly welcome to.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. I'm glad to represent Parkview and the Boys and Girls Club. They both mean it.
Next, we are going to recognize the Central High School Step Team. We're excited to recognize this group for recent accomplishment in a competition. Representing the Step Team tonight are Central sophomores Maya Vadel and Tanika Jaeger, who are accompanied by their sponsor, Ashley Felton. Would you all please come forward? In January, the CHS team of about 20 students participated in a virtual competition hosted by World of Step. The performance resulted in the team winning first place in the novice division. Central organized its first Step Team in 2002, but did not have consistent participation until October of 2021, when it was reorganized. The team will participate in another virtual competition in April. Please join us in congratulating them on this great accomplishment. Would you like to share anything on behalf of the Step Team that you didn't cover? You'd like to?
There's not really much else, except we also go on college visits as well. So not only do we step, but it's a sisterhood, it's a family. So it's something that's welcome for everyone.
Great. We'd love to get your photo. Okay. One, two, three. You. We will conclude our recognition tonight by highlighting the story of an SPS employee who makes a positive impact on lives every day. This month, our "Your Story is Our Story" feature focuses on a vocal music teacher at Harrison Elementary School whose impact stretches beyond her music classroom. Let's watch this video to learn more about Haley Ackland.
Hi, my name is Haley Ackland, and I am the elementary music educator at David Harrison Elementary. Ms. Ackland is an active presence with our team. Not only is she our music teacher, but she makes connections with students all over the building and is flexible to serve in any way that is needed to make sure that our learners have what they need. This is year 18, and it's the first time I've ever been in my own school and only one school. I've always been so many different places, and so having the opportunity to really invest all of my time in that one place, it's just made all the difference. Connections with the adults in the building are so important because before we can have high levels of learning, we need to be at school. Students that are connected through music with Ms. Ackland, not only are they interested in what they're learning in their classrooms, but they also have that additional connection through the work that Ms. Ackland does with Check and Connect. And we build our high levels of learning off the foundation of strong relationships. The Check and Connect process has been something that the specialty teachers have done for several years. Classroom teachers provide us with a list of names of kids that just need a little extra attention from a safe adult. We talk about those at our PLT time meetings and decide which one of us feels like they would be the best fit for that student. She leads a club called the Harrison Hipmakers. They have performed the National Anthem at Kickapoo. They traveled to the Marinatha Village. She leads us with songs in the morning, and in March, she'll have a March Madness. So just the idea of music, the energy and joy it brings to the building is something really important. She contributes to our culture. We want kids to want to come to school, and families are very busy. So anyone who has time and is able to pour into that child, why not? It's really fantastic that I can see with my own eyes and feel how I'm making a difference in that student's life.
Hillary, would you please come forward? Shonda Witt, principal, is here as well. On three, here we are, right? Hillary, would you like to say anything?
When I got to Harrison, this was a program that was already in process. Our former PE teacher, now counselor, used to call it TLC. And she said that just looking at the kids that come into school, she recognized kids that just needed a little TLC. And so then, in talking with fellow coworkers at other schools, she recognized that there's already kind of a program for this, and we can put the Harrison spin on it and keep it going. And so they have, and it's been an integral part of what specialty teachers do. So we don't just do music, art, PE, library, computers, but we also have students that we meet with every week. And one student I give piano lessons to, one student I do craft projects with. Other students, we just take walks in the hallway. It's whatever they need, but it makes a difference in their lives. And so every teacher that is investing in a student, that return is huge. And then we're preparing to send them off to the next step in their education with coping mechanisms and strategies and ways to self calm and self soothe so that they can be more ready for whatever comes in the next step of their education. And so I'm so grateful to be a part of that. So thank you very much. I appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
And that concludes our honoring excellence for this evening. Thank you.
Our next agenda item is the approval of the agenda. Recommended action is that the board approve the agenda as presented. However, we'd like to have a motion to amend the agenda to add 3.01 Discussion of Youth Empowerment Summit, including the following. A, a review of complaints received, and B, a review of board member ethics and duties, and C, board consideration of appropriate action, if any.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so I have a second. We have a motion on the board, so we need a second.
I seconded it.
Oh, you seconded the motion? Okay. So good cause exists to amend the agenda to include this item to ensure that the needs of students, staff, patrons, and community partners are addressed promptly and further disruption is avoided. So the remaining agenda items would be numbered accordingly. So at this time, we have a motion, we have a second, and are there any comments or questions from the colleagues about amending the agenda?
Question.
Okay.
Is there any reason this wasn't brought to our attention sooner?
I'm sorry, you'll have to speak up.
Any reason this wasn't brought to our attention sooner? Why, we're just hearing about this now?
Because it was asked to be put on the agenda.
Interesting. Okay.
So that we will, as these have been brought forward by board members, so at this time, we will take a vote.
I'm sorry, could we not have been provided any prior notice? Is that not possible? At what time, I guess, did someone request this?
Very quickly.
I'll just say that we've received, over the past 24 hours, we've received quite a bit of feedback. And so, I mean, there's been a motion, there's a second. If you don't want it on the agenda, you can vote now.
I just had a separate question regarding this issue, which is, it seems like some notice could have been made, and I'm just curious why it wasn't made. If there's not an answer for that, then we can proceed.
And I don't even know why we would have to go through this motion at this point.
Well, we have a...
Give me a purpose. Give me a reason.
Because of the urgency of the information that has come forward to the board.
And what's the urgency?
That many people in our community have asked us as a board to address this.
And this would be setting to do that, or later?
It has to be done in open session. Again, as a board, we have a motion and a second, and so we can take a vote. So at this time, I don't, we do not have it on our agenda, so we can certainly, as we have done things in the past, and take yes and no votes. So I guess we can start with, start with Steve?
I vote no.
Okay. And we'll go to Scott. Are you with us, Scott, where we are? We're voting on making...
I vote aye.
Aye. Thanks, Sharita.
Aye.
Yes.
Mary?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
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 And Chair votes aye. So, Emmy, you have that?
Sixteen.
So motion carries. So we will have that discussion, however, we will move that to 3.01. That discussion will occur at 3.01. So at this time, we will go to 2.01, which is a public...
We still need to approve the agenda.
That's right.
We still need to have a vote on the approval.
So we need to...
1.04.
Oh, 1.04. So we have amended the agenda, so at this point, we do need to approve the agenda as amended. So, Sharita?
Second.
And Daniel is second. So now we need to go back around and vote to approve the amended agenda. We should be able to do that on here. And we can do that on, I think...
Sharita and Daniel.
Okay, so motion carries. So we did, so we do have an approved agenda for this evening's meeting. Okay, so we're going to move to 2.01, public comments. Okay, so before comments, we have a section that I read. We now come to public comments. So the Board of Education welcomes comments about the issues being discussed. The Board uses this time in our meeting to listen to the public, but will not comment or engage with the public during this meeting. The Board allows for up to 10 speakers per public comment, period. The Board Chair will call on individuals in the order in which they signed up. Substitutions are not permitted. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes and will be timed by the Board Secretary. Something, if you are a speaker, something that will help you out, there are timers on both screens, so please keep an eye on the time so I don't have to stop you. Comments must be acceptable for a business and family-friendly environment. Inappropriate language, gestures, or personal attacks will not be tolerated. It is inappropriate to address the Board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed to the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the school or in the district office. Another note for this evening, we appreciate everyone being with us this evening, and we appreciate your support of the district staff and students. Given the number of people this evening present and given recent events, I must caution everyone that this is a business meeting, and everyone must ensure that they remain professional, respectful, and courteous. Disruptions and outbursts will not be tolerated and may result in removal from the meeting. Please refrain from coughing and comments following each speaker. If you have materials that you want to share, please place them in the tray on the podium, and they will be distributed to board members following the meeting. Again, please keep an eye on the timer on the screen to help you keep track of the time. So we're going to go through the list of speakers in order, and we'll begin with Thomas Johnson.
Dr. Lathan, members of the Board, greetings. My name is Tom Johnson. I'm a behavior tech for SPS. I'm here to talk tonight about the cessation of annualized pay for support staff. Support staff is one of the backbones of SPS. We really care for our students. I'm here, I want to start out by saying that we have a genuine concern for our students, and we love our students, and we report every day because of that love and genuine desire for those students to succeed. I work with some of the most challenging students in the district, and quite honestly, I fall in love with them. It's just the way the job works for me. But I feel that we, as support staff, were kind of blindsided a little bit about the cessation of annualized pay. We were not communicated with. Before it happened, we received an email on a snow day about 3:00 in the afternoon saying, hey, we're going to quit this. And if you first glance at thing, and you're reading an email on a day off, you look at it and you go, wow, this is going to happen right away. Or obviously, when you read it a little bit, you know, there's some times. But so, that means that there was time considered when this was put together. And I know the district is big on collaboration and contact and input, but we, as support staff, were never contacted on this issue. We never had a chance to put any input in, that kind of thing. The other thing that's said is for retention and recruitment. I travel the district a lot, talk to a lot of people, a lot of people, a lot of coworkers that are dedicated to their job, and the majority of them I talk to are not for this. It's not, it's just, I don't know if it's because of lack of communication or just, you know, in general, that we feel a little bit of angst about how this all came about. Yes, we're going to receive the same pay, but we're going to have less pay periods, which means higher withholding percentages of our check. Yeah, we'll have a higher gross pay, and we'll probably take home a little bit more, but our taxes are going to go up. I mean, the percentage taken out for taxes, the percentage taken out for peers will be up, percentages of our insurance, because there's less pay periods coming out. So, I mean, yes, while we're making the same amount of money, we've got to also budget, which we can do. We can budget to put money away, but also there's three months out of the year where our paychecks aren't going to be as big, because you have spring break, Thanksgiving break, and winter break. We're not going to get paid for those times. It's going to make it really tough, especially in those months, especially in December and November, when taxes come due, that type of thing. So I just wanted to air our opinion on that and just hope that the Board will reconsider or at least look into it and get some input from the support staff. Thank you.
Whitney Dyer.
I've spent days trying to write this speech, going over the same points we'd made for five months, trying to rephrase, reword, and reframe in a way that might finally connect with you, in a way that will speak on behalf of the 80 people that came with me here tonight. Some are in this room, but a lot are in that overflow room. But how can I expect to be heard when you refuse to open your ears? I stood right here and I explained to you how my life was saved from just a few simple words being spoken to me. It saved me from my own self-destruction. That same night, I told you that at least 1,386 of our Gen Z students in our school district are LGBTQ. That same night, I told you that 45% of them struggle with suicidal thoughts and ideation. Forty-five percent. That is 623 students in our district right now that are struggling with suicidal thoughts. 623. We've continued to ask you for the same thing, and for five months, every night, you have put your head down on your pillow and you have gone to sleep, letting another day go by that you did absolutely nothing for these students. People like me, the parents that sit here with me, the students themselves are sitting there sleepless. We are stressed, we are anxious, and we are literally being erased, and you are sleeping. It's been made abundantly clear that some of our board members do not focus on the students themselves. This was even more obvious when a board member interrupted a mental health exercise with some of our students in attendance. Some of you are proving that you will gladly sacrifice our children off your own agenda. I know I sound angry, but that's because I am, and so are the rest of the people that are here with me. This district has continued to choose politics over people over and over and over. We are asking you for basic human decency, and we have gotten silence from you. This is not about progressives versus conservatives or Republicans versus Democrats. We're talking about human lives. We are talking about children. I know that we can do better. I know that we can do better, but you saw probably on social media the outcry just for me to be here and speak tonight. There was literally protesters outside. I had threats all week long on my life and my family's life to speak at a public meeting. Can you imagine how our students are feeling in the classroom if it feels 1% how I feel here in this room? I am a grown adult, and I am anxious to be here. I am shaking right now. My life is threatened to be here for these students, and you remain silent. Sadly, over the past five months, I've heard heartbreaking story after story after story about discrimination from parents, students, and even teachers. They're reaching out to me, a complete stranger, not you. That lets you know that our district is not safe. You are not a safe place for them, and you should be. We are once again asking that you issue a statement of support for the LGBTQ+ students, staff, and faculty. It's the bare minimum you can give them.
Please keep in mind that I asked. We're listening, so please refrain from clapping so we can keep moving on. We can hear you.
That's reminding, Scott's on a lag. Scott is on a lag, so if you need to talk to Scott, give him a few seconds.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You good?
Yes. We can hear you.
Well, first of all, good evening. Glad to be here. I want to start by echoing the comments made by Brittany. It's the bare minimum. It's the right thing to do. You have the draft statement of support for you. It's, you just have to do it. It's the right thing to do. I'm here today as Vice President of Springfield Chapter N double ACP. There was a statement that was released by Springfield Chapter N double ACP. It was also sent to the Board, is my understanding, but I also want to share that in public comments today. The Springfield Chapter of the N double ACP advocates for all students, and through its Youth Empowerment Summit, a collaboration between N double ACP, Springfield Public Schools, and Missouri State University, we work diligently to foster and promote academic achievement and higher education accessibility among our local high school students. Unfortunately, this work was recently undermined by a very sitting member of this Board of Education. On Thursday, February 23rd, this Board member attended a Youth Empowerment Summit session which centered on brain health. While in attendance, this Board member decided to disrupt the session by openly challenging the facilitator and by making comments that erased the experience of several students in attendance. Many students who attended this session expressed upset, frustration, and dismay at the disruption. It was quite evident that an event meant to foster conversations on ways to adequately care for one's mental health and well-being was amended by the actions of this Board member. The members of the Executive Committee of the N double ACP, Springfield Chapter, are unequivocal in our condemnation of this Board member and their actions. While we encourage all to participate in our events and meant to honor and uplift our young people, we will not abide by attempts to undermine our work to support our youth. We firmly believe this Board member owes both the facilitator and the SPS students in attendance at this brain health session a formal apology. Now, I'm going to take off my hat as VP of N double ACP and just speak as Kyler. Sherman-Wilkins is a constituent of this area. This very sitting Board member has displayed a pattern of what I consider to be asinine behavior, whether it's insinuating that our queer teachers are groomers, or whether it is disrupting time and time again Board meetings and also just pushing their ridiculous and asinine agenda. It's time for it to stop. We need to hold everyone accountable for their actions, especially if they work to undermine the very work that we're doing to make sure that every student, every person is supported in this district.
Cheryl Clay.
I am also here to address serious concerns over the attack on the Youth Empowerment Summit, formerly known as the Youth Empowerment Conference. This event was begun by past N double ACP President Reverend Larry Maddox over a decade ago. It's been supported in partnerships with several local banks, all of Springfield Higher Education Institutions, OTC Middle College, Springfield Police Department, and Springfield Public Schools. It was begun in a time when there were only a few, if any, diverse faculty represented at SPS. It showcased diverse community leaders and business owners leading workshops with students. The event was to encourage and empower students with opportunities to see someone that looked like them being successful. Over the years, like everything else, in today's world, the conference has evolved. Its focus is now to be more inclusive and relevant to today's issues, moving from solely a career or job focus into looking into higher education, mental health, and social media. We have had union representatives inform students of apprenticeship opportunities and subsequent related career paths. We've had local beauticians and barbers, as well as other entrepreneurs. We have had well-known authors such as Wes Moore, the author of The Other Wes Moore. The event sessions have always been a safe environment for students to ask questions and express themselves with their peers. For an adult to disrupt a session with their personal biases and lack of respect for a workshop facilitator and students is not only unacceptable, but disheartening and disrespectful. The workshops are designed to be educational, informative, and interactive. They are also designed to empower our students. We as adults have got to do better at learning how to navigate our own personal biases to not negatively affect folks. In this case, the students we are tasked to educate.
Carolanne Scott Leo.
Hi, and thank you so much for the time today. My name is Carolanne, and I'm a secretary here at SPS. And I started as a sub with SPS, fell in love with it, became a paraprofessional, and am now a secretary. I absolutely love my job. I live coming to work every day. I can honestly say I've never had a job that I've liked better. But I'm speaking to you on behalf of the support staff who feel kind of spit on, slighted, and disrespected by SPS by the choice to go to a non-annualized pay. It's kind of a disrespectful way to treat the support staff that this school so heavily relies on, that the school district so heavily relies on. We wonder if you know how many of us are actually single-income parents, supporting on one income, living on this salary. It's difficult, but we've made the choice because we love what we do so much, that that shouldn't be taken advantage of by taking away our security and our pay. We are living check-to-check without the benefit of building savings accounts, taking vacations, or taking time away. Even with many of us working summer school, it's difficult to exist on. But here we are, day in, day out, taking care of the things at the school that very few people are truly willing to do. We get kicked, and we hit, and we get hit, and we get bitten, we get spit on, we change diapers, and we feed children, and we do this all together lovingly, anytime we work with the kids. We do not do this for the love of many, but for the satisfaction of helping where our talents allow us to. I would have never, ever taken this job with non-annualized pay. There's a lot of people who feel this way also. We feel like we've been sold a bag of goods. We signed up for something, we made career choices, we made decisions to take this job based on what it can get us, and by taking away our non-annualized pay, you're hurting us very greatly. I cannot apply for a car loan. I cannot sign a new lease on a new apartment for myself because I cannot prove employment and income for those three months. I do not, will not have a regular paycheck starting from November, from Thanksgiving, and that rolls into Christmas, that rolls into snow days, that rolls into spring break. All of those months in there are not going to be regular paychecks that we can balance and work our budgets on, on that one single paycheck. So as an example, I have friends who rely on food stamps that will no longer be able to feed their families due to the amount that they are earning now will set them over the cap. They're not going to be able to get those food stamps for their families and then also then be absolutely penniless and not have those food stamps to run on for the summer. Everyone that is in these positions signed on for annual pay and agreed that that is the way that we want it to be paid. If you feel it is imperative to make the decision of changing this, please consider grandfathering us in so that we may be able to continue our lives as we are, and thank you so much. Also, please support our LGBTQ+ the youth. Thank you so much.
Good evening, members of the Council. My name is Wendy Riley Washington, and today I will be talking about my experience at the Yask Conference. The importance of this event was to allow a safe space for young Black individuals to share their testimonies of racism that we are forced to silently endure within our educational institutions. From athletics to academics, we are told-
Wendy, I'm going to ask you to just slow down, just slow down so we can understand you and don't be so nervous. We want to hear what you have.
I just got a lot to say, and I want to meet the time limit.
We want to hear. You're okay. We want to hear what you have to say.
From athletics to academics, we are told to remain silent when these injustices are inflicted upon us or as we are stripped of our opportunities. When we thought we had finally had a safe space to air our testimonies, a certain member of the Board proved us otherwise. While the eyes of everyone in the room were closed besides the Speaker, hers were, therefore proving the notion that we cannot speak freely, therefore validating our fear. The Speaker asked us to raise our hands if we had ever experienced racism or microaggressions. The Speaker stated that everyone's hands were up, but a certain member of the Board decided to say that only 10 hands were up. The entire room turns around and looks appalled at her audacity to minimize our experiences. Even if there was only 10 people who had experienced racism, her job is to strive for an equitable educational environment for all of us. With that statement, it infuriated the room. Instead of listening to our second Speaker, we decided that we no longer cared about who was listening. We formed a circle and gave our testimonies about how that situation made us feel. We concluded various things as the following that we thought would be brought up to undermine how we feel. Even if the Vice President was Black, we would have felt the same way about her comment. We actually would have felt even more disappointed that someone from our community would have made that comment and minimized our experiences, considering they grew up within our culture. Our schools have restricted, have been restricted from teaching us about racism and microaggressions, therefore there is no way for us to actually identify those things. When we speak up about those experiences, they have been watered down and gaslit, and I can name many of individuals from my school that are teachers who have been put in those positions that have did that to me. Lastly, she left the room without even apologizing about her disruptive behavior. In 2021, you all stated that ensuring that the district, that you all are working to ensure that the district is equitable and inclusive for all ethical responsibility, your ethical responsibility is making sure that all students feel safe and that it's very inclusive environment. Any deliberate attempt to misrepresent this important work, especially for political purpose, is shameful indeed, and that is what it feels, we feel like our civil liberties have become a political statute, and it should not be. And seeing this from a Board member that has stated to be one thing and exhibit another only exemplifies the contradictory behavior, there is more than enough evidence stated here to show the political corruption that has taken over the Board. My civil liberties are political. We demand a public apology, and I can assure that we aren't going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather, we have Heather DeBert here. Okay.
Good evening. Tonight, I am speaking to you not only as a paraprofessional, but also as the parent of a student with a disability. I am asking you to hear the voices of over 1,100 support staff and reverse the decision to end our annualized pay. I would like to refer to the documentation provided by the district. Within this documentation, there are seven reasons listed for this change, and for the sake of time, I'd like to address four. Increased control of finance for the employee. Inside the meetings, this was explained as giving us access to the money that we have made as we make it and allowing us to budget our money to make it stretch across the summer months. This in and of itself is the most divisive statement made. Support staff are the lowest paid in the district, the majority of us live paycheck-to-paycheck, and many have second jobs to make ends meet. If our take-home pay was more, any extra money would go towards rising costs of food, electricity, and basic needs. It would never last until summer. Switching to a nine-month pay system will negatively impact a multitude of financial areas. These areas include securing car loans, mortgages, applying for new rental properties. The increased gross pay will affect many. They will lose food stamps, disability benefits, and access to other vital federal programs. Number two, increased transparency and pay calculation for employees. Education is our best fix here, but I would also like to add, many employees have run the numbers. An increase in gross comes with an increase in withholdings, then 12 months of benefits spread across nine. On average, support staff will be bringing home less pay annually, not more. Number three, recruit and retain employees. Currently, there are at least 200 employees who will resign due to this change. Paired with the shortage we are already experiencing, the fallout will be catastrophic. There is absolutely no way to be in compliance with DESI inside our sped classrooms without adequate support staff. We will fail to provide safety and an education. Number four, streamline process with the Oracle Cloud Fusion System. Oracle Cloud Fusion System Note 11.1.9.2.0 explains, "There is a built-in formula in our brand-new software for annualized pay. At bare minimum, staff could be given a choice." The paraprofessionals who taught two students to eat solid food this year for the very first time, nutrition service workers who communicate safety to our students with food and security, the custodial staff who tirelessly scrub unmentionables off our floors, walls, and ceilings, the school secretaries who hold it all together, the people who care for my son, day in and day out. These are the people to which this decision communicates. You have no value. Fellow support staff in the room and listening online, thank you for what you do for my children and others like them. Your value is immeasurable to me.
Hold off just a second. Sure Scott's with us?
Yeah, he's with us.
Okay. Moving on to Rue Wong. I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
Good evening, Board members. Wait one second.
Yeah, you've got a rowdy crowd over here.
So good. Good evening, Board members. My name is Rue Wong. I work with Queer and Neurodivergent Youth with the Springfield Cooperative Youth Group. As someone who works closely alongside marginalized youth and hears their stories of hurt on a weekly basis, it is increasingly important for me to create a safe and supportive environment for all my youth. Create that safe space, I have had to learn the importance of affirming their humanity through implementing trauma-informed practices. This looks like saying your pronouns after your name, or turning the lights down when they say they're overstimulated, or telling stories about Black history, or going through pride parades. or going through pride parades. Diversity inclusion looks like small and powerful steps towards making every teen feel seen and heard in whatever context they're in. Now, it saddens me to say that there are individuals in this community and on this board who directly oppose those efforts. There was a comment made at the BLAST School Board meeting in September that continues to sit with me. In response to the group's comments about the removal of pride flags from SPS schools, it was said the school board, that the Springfield Public School System strives to create a supportive environment for all students. I need to say this. You can't genuinely mean the word "all" until you are actively working towards the inclusion of students of color and LGBTQIA+ youth. And this starts with choosing curriculum that doesn't erase their existence. Thank you.
We have one last speaker. Lacey Stiles.
Good afternoon. Thank you for taking your time to hear my story tonight. I am here to speak as a paraprofessional for SPS about the ending of annualized pay for support staff. While I understand that a lot of work has gone into this possible decision, I feel a vital piece of the puzzle for the solution is missing, and that vital piece is our story. The support staff and those who this decision affects personally, financially, and mentally. For example, me as a single person can't just go apply for a loan with the promise to a lender, "Oh, after, oh, other month I get paid, other months I get paid more," and it will be able to go towards the loan. The lender can't in good conscience trust that the money needed for the loan will be there to go towards the loan on lower-paying months. That is why they look through past month's paychecks to see stability. This is just one example why annualized pay gives us stability. While we already don't get paid enough to not have to live paycheck to paycheck, the stability gave peace of mind knowing we could trust, gave us peace of mind knowing we could trust and know what would be coming in each month. That is now being threatened of going away, and more stress is being put on us who work tirelessly to make sure SPS students have the love and support they need to become independent, successful adults. We wouldn't be here if it was for the money. I ask that as a school district, our stories, please be listened to and considered. Let's put a little trust back into the hearts of those who work with and love the students so much. Let's not lose valuable assets to the school district. If we are looking to bring more people in, a simple solution would be competitive pay seeing that all, or at least most of us, have well over 60 college credit hours. Again, thank you for listening to my story, and I hope our stories can truly be looked at as your stories as well.
Conclude our public comments. We're going to move into 3.01 as we amended our agenda to discussion of the Youth Empowerment Summit. So, board members, I have placed at your seats a reminder of the professional expectations that apply to all of us as board members, especially when we are on school property and or at school events. So, this is a publication of the Missouri School Board Association, which is our professional association. So, I ask that each of you review this guidance and ensure adherence. And then I have a specific note. I'm just going to start the conversation by pointing out a few things, and then we can go from there. Just a sense of urgency in our discussion this evening in open session, which is where a board discusses things that have been brought forward. And this has been brought to us through a number of communications, and of those communications have been brought forward from our partners that partner with us on this summit, MSU. Let me grab my phone back here. I think most of you know, you've all received the communications, our partners, MSU, Bull, NAACP, and then from our SPS staff, and most importantly, from our students. So, something that we need to discuss, and we certainly have the right for each board member to provide their thoughts. This board acts as a collective. No one member has the authority to act unless specifically designated by the board to do so. Individual board members have no greater authority than a member of the general public. This includes no greater authority to access school buildings, to be present in classrooms, to attend student events during the school day. In fact, many school districts do not arrange for school board members to visit school buildings during the school day. So, a reminder that this district has allowed for us, school board members, with specific procedures to be followed, to visit our school buildings. It has been brought to our superintendent's attention and to other individuals' attention that not every board member follows these procedures, which can disrupt the school environment and instruct, or can disrupt instructional day. And not every board member follows the procedures which can disrupt the school environment and pulls employees from their day-to-day responsibilities to engage with unexpected visits from a board member. I think that's what has come to our attention. We are often invited to events, and we should take advantage of these opportunities. When invited and present, that's the key, when invited and present, it is not appropriate for a board member to interfere with the instruction or activities that are underway. Any concern should be brought to the attention of the superintendent. So, if a board member has a concern about what is said or done at that event, it should be brought to the attention of the superintendent at an appropriate time and place. So, we must recognize and acknowledge for all of us as members of the board, our actions and our words are closely scrutinized and reflect not only upon the individual board member, but all of us as board members and the district. So, we as a board have a responsibility to police ourselves and ensure that each of us and we as a collective board adhere to professional standards and do not engage in conduct that can be perceived as or may negatively impact the district, students, staff, patrons, or community partners. And I think the key here for me, as a longtime board member and as a former employee of this district, is negatively impact students. We have received numerous communications from students and heard from several today they felt like that their safe place was invaded. And that is something that we certainly would not want someone to come in and do during our business meeting. And so, I think that what I'm saying here is that as board members, it's always a good reminder for us to know our role and our responsibility as a board member. So, at this time, I'm going to open the floor to comments from board members, or comments or emotion from board members moving forward. Everyone has an opportunity to speak.
I attended the event. I have attended the Youth Empowerment Summit for over 10 years as a member of the NAACP, as the youth advisor for the NAACP, and as a faculty member of Missouri State University. The conference has been held at Missouri State University, my place of employment, and I have been a part of the planning and have participated in this particular event, like I said, for many years. It has been something that the children and students who lived in my house have looked forward to attending, and it is something that I know many students in the district appreciate and look forward to attending. I was in the room when the disruption occurred, and I chose not to turn around with the students, but there was a visceral response from the students who were really upset by the comments that were made. And the students expressed their disappointment that their personal experiences would be negated. Whether there were 30 people who raised their hand or whether there were 10, those 10 felt like their particular experiences were negated. I also recognize, since everyone's being really quiet, that anyone who's ever taught a class of students understands that when there is a disruption, trying to regain the attention of the students after that is nearly impossible. And the facilitator spent a good 15 minutes trying to just get the composure of the students back in order for them to be able to listen, but it was nearly impossible.
Scott, did you... Are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, all right. I didn't know if you...
So, my thoughts on this, you hit it on the head that we need to act as a collective board, and procedures need to be followed. That means, this is an SPS event, Dr. Lathan needs to be notified that a SPS board member is attending. No one should be acting in this manner, especially a board member. You should not disrupt any SPS event. And we should be an amazing example for these students. No students should witness this type of behavior. And I just think we as the board need to, this is not acceptable, we as the board need to hold all our board members, Dr. Mahoney, accountable for our actions. So, something that we should take very seriously, and need to hold them accountable for these actions. You should not be receiving these type of letters, emails. You've got more work to do than that. And as I said before, we need to be a great example for these students.
I have some comments, but I am curious if the other board member who was present in the room wanted to give any context about what occurred.
Thank you. I'm really troubled that no one has reached out to me. This is the first I'm hearing of this. You have my cell phone numbers, you have my email, you certainly know how to get ahold of me. And I feel that as a duly-elected member of this body, I deserve that. What you are seeking, I mean, you are seeking a public shaming without due course, Scott. And that speaks to the dysfunction of this board. And I've spoken on this before, this culture of group think. So, I find myself for this mob, and all I can ask for you are the facts. I notified, well, let me give a preamble. I am very involved in the last two weeks. I try to hit as many events as I can. I've had six school visits, gone to the PTA Clothing Bank, I went to the Wellness Committee. I just try to see as much as I can and open my eyes and listen and see and just be there for everyone and to show my support. I never know how my schedule is going to work out. The day before, when I saw that I was able to attend this event that I knew was happening, I was not aware that this was an SPS event. This is a collaborative effort, and I notified, I called by telephone the organizer of the event. This was not on SPS property, and it was not an SPS event. It was not run by SPS. It was run by the group organizer that was on the flyer. I called this individual, and I notified her that I would be attending. I introduced myself, and I asked her where to go because I didn't know where it was going to be. I had just seen the flyer on one of my school visits. So, just to recap, this is the Youth Empowerment Summit. There was a session one that was titled Elevating Black Excellence. It was moderated by the Springfield DI officers. Afterwards, I peeked into session two. These are breakout sessions, and they were broken out by student grade levels. So, we had freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. I peeked into session two, which was for the high school seniors, and it was titled Taking Care of Your Brain Health. And it was moderated by a Borough Health employee. The first slide I saw was titled The Trauma Brain. The next slide was titled Racial Trauma. I then slipped through the back door to stand at the very back of the room. The moderator was asking the students to close their eyes and raise their hands if they felt that at some point they had experienced the sort of trauma that she had just described. Approximately 10 students, or about, give or take, 20, 25% of the students raised their hands. The moderator then asked them to put down their hands and open their eyes. She said, and I quote, "I want you all to know that every single person in this room raised their hand because this is real." I raised my hand, and I waited. Dr. Thomas Tate asked if this could be experienced indirectly or by watching a video, and the moderator answered absolutely. And she then said a few words. The moderator then called on me by saying, "Yes." I replied, "Only about 10 people raised their hand." Those are the only seven words I spoke after I was given permission to speak. The moderator replied, "Okay, thank you. I'll make note of that next time." She then followed with, "I'm glad you had your eyes open while everybody else had theirs closed." I left the room and texted the superintendent right away, but I never heard back. The following morning, I called the board president, who later texted me back to express that she would not have time to connect with me until Monday. Meanwhile, I responded to a call and subsequent texts from Claudette Riley of the News Leader with allegations that I had interrupted a session on trauma to raise objections about what was being discussed. Since I had not spoken out of turn, and neither had I objected to the topic, I indicated that her information was incorrect and that I could not discuss it further without speaking with my superintendent. Scott, I was following protocol. The board president's statement was issued without contacting me. The News Leader article was subsequently published, including the heinous accusations levied on my character. Those are the facts. I didn't create that scene. That wasn't my scene. I didn't choose. I wasn't the one who lied to teenagers to protect an agenda. I merely pointed out the truth when it was my turn to speak and when I was given permission to speak. Because I felt that it was simply wrong to emotionally and psychologically manipulate and deprecate the students who didn't raise their hands in that moment. And I felt that it was especially egregious when it was being perpetrated under the guise of mental health. I will continue to speak the truth whenever it's necessary to protect children from whatever the hustlers are peddling. I don't, I'm not, I'm not done speaking. I have one more sentence.
But I'm done, so I would like the lady that stood that was yelling, please, you're done. Please remove her. The other individuals that were standing and yelling, you're done. Please leave. We're trying to have a quiet business meeting that allowed Dr. Mom and Connie to speak. If you were standing and yelling, folks, if you stood and yelled, I would like for you to leave and let her finish. She has to say what she has to say. I think there's someone on the back row.
Yeah, the lady with the flag on was standing.
So, I'm going to ask our security, can you help me out and ask that person to leave? We can listen. We don't need this. Allow her to speak. What term did you use that set them off?
Petlers, that were peddling, petlers.
Who are you referring to?
I'm not done speaking.
Okay, I'm just wondering what you were, petlers, okay. You can start where you were.
Well, I was almost done. Danielle, I don't question myself for why I defended the truth. What I question is why nobody else does and nobody else did.
Are you finished?
I am.
Okay. So, you absolutely caused the disruption. Kiki's, the presenter's presentation was, would not have been disrupted were it not for you challenging the presenter. Now, I understand that you may have issues with the presenter, and you may disagree with the presenter. It's like me being in church and someone, a preacher saying something I disagree with, and I just say, "No, that's not true! That's not the appropriate place and time." So, there's an opportunity for you to challenge those, that presenter in front of those students who were engaged in that session and came to that session to engage was not the appropriate time. So, you did cause absolutely the disruption.
I don't know the presenter, nor do I have any reason, what you said. I don't know her, so I have no preconceived anything.
Connie speaks on a regular basis here.
Yes, but I don't know her, and I thought she was a psychologist or a mental health expert. We have a lot of people that come and speak for us. What you're, so, am I hearing that it is okay to lie to children?
It is not okay to lie to children, but it's also not okay to challenge the presenter in front of children during their session that they were engaged in. If you have a problem with that, there's ways to handle it. This is part of being in an educational setting. You can talk to the presenter afterwards and say, "This is a problem." Then you go to our superintendent and say, "This is a problem." Then we can have the opportunity to debrief with the students and tell them why it was a problem. But doing it during the session in front of the superintendent, in front of the students is not appropriate whatsoever. That's a part of a regular learning environment.
I have some comments that I'd like to make.
Okay, sure. I'll try to remember that. I mean, I'm going to try to remember what you said so that I can...
Please do. Go ahead, Danielle.
One of the reasons that this is on the agenda this evening is because we are a public body. We are required to have these conversations in open session, and I don't think it would have been appropriate for all of us to reach out to you for comment without it being in a public realm.
Not all of you, but apparently enough of you reached out to the board president. I assume there's a quorum because things don't get added to the agenda.
There was...
So, there was some discussion because...
I did reach out to the president, you're correct. Yes, I did not reach out to all the board members.
No, nor did I expect it, but I would have appreciated the courtesy of being reached out to by my board president.
And I'm asking you in public session, what, you know, if you had a different perception of what occurred in that room, so thank you for that context. I'm also a little, and you don't need to respond to this, I can just make these comments. I'm confused why you didn't know that it was also an SPS event. I think it was included in our weekly update, this event, and you certainly saw the flyer in a school.
It wasn't our event we were attending. We didn't run the event.
Correct, you're correct. And I'm curious, I understand it wasn't just open to any public person who wanted to attend. So, when you called, did you introduce yourself as a board member?
Yes.
Okay, you individually called without notifying our superintendent or our president that you wanted to attend a session, for example?
Yes.
And you know board policy is to...
We don't have a board policy.
Right. And then, I'm also just disturbed because from the reports that I have received from people who were in the room and also some of the letters that we have received, what you have described is drastically different than what all the other individuals have described. Your, the incident that was described to me from other people in the room was different. And as some of our public speakers have indicated tonight, this is not an isolated incident, although it has been the most public of a pattern of actions which have compromised the district's relationship with various community entities. Our strategic plan, which was developed by this board and accepted by this board, includes objectives to increase community partnerships, develop initiatives to promote engagement while addressing barriers for students, create well-rounded educational experiences for students by partnering with post-secondary institutions, and to celebrate collaborative partners to enhance a community-wide network of support for our students. Our policy, BBF, requires all board members to take no private action that would compromise the board or this administration. The executive board of the NAACP sent us a letter earlier today noting that the Youth Empowerment Summit is a collaboration between the NAACP, SPS, and Missouri State to foster and promote academic achievement and higher education accessibility among our local high school students. In addition, yesterday, we received a joint letter from President Cliff Smart at Missouri State University and CEO CJ Davis of Bural Health concerning the actions of our board vice president, noting that the Youth Empowerment Summit was a time of self-reflection and vulnerability for students, not an appropriate venue for judgment or disruption by observers which inflicted emotional harm on the students. The Youth Empowerment Summit is an enrichment event that allows all students with parent and guardian permission to experience a day on a college campus so that they can envision themselves enrolled in higher education. Students attended presentations and engaged in discussions on ethical leadership, cultural competency, and community engagement. Breakout sessions this year included social media responsibility, positive body image, and financial literacy. Yet it was described by our vice president of this board as she was disturbed by what she saw at the Youth Empowerment Summit. Outside of the strategic plan, outside of board policy, the actions were disruptive to the learning environment of the students present in that room. These students have no agenda. These students were high school seniors sitting in a room, learning about some of the, the things that were being provided at that summit. Their experience and reactions were very pure, and they included, and we received some of these via email and also with our presenter this evening. These students said that they were disappointed in our vice president's behavior because it was inappropriate and it ruined the moment. Another student said this was supposed to be a safe place. Another student said, "I felt disrespected." Another student said, "This event is likely the last time for a while that I will be in a room with many students of color. Someone came into that space that's supposed to be safe for students and completely stripped them of that opportunity." This room was safe before the comment was made. This was not the time and place to comment. I felt invalidated. It was not her lesson to teach. She took the moment away from me. Dr. Mohammed Kani did not think about the effect her words would have, and they devalued the voices of the individuals brave enough to admit that they had experienced racial trauma. I was taken aback when I discovered that not only is she a board member, she's the vice president and in charge of students. And this one, we received this one, this one email earlier today, and I thought it was so insightful. A student said, "It's always important to consider the context of a situation. In this case, the context is that it does not matter if even one person in that room raised their hand, because when it comes to raising your hand and asking about trauma, we have to stand up for each other because it really is just bullying. It's unnecessarily rude aggression towards high schoolers. If Dr. Mohammed Kani is unable to follow the most basic rules of common courtesy, it's very concerning that she's in charge of our children." And those are all comments from students who don't have an agenda here. And what really stood out to me from the students is that their focus was on your actions, not on how many students raised their hands. That was kind of just an aside. They were looking at what did your comments do to that room and how it disrupted the room and the academic learning that was going on in there. Our community partners, our superintendent, our staff, other members of the board have spent hours responding to inquiries, text messages, calls because of the inappropriate actions of one board member. This is distracting from the important work that there is to be done here, and that's educating our students. Board members should not be a distraction from that hard work. We should support that hard work, and we should support the individuals who have the education, experience, and expertise to run the day-to-day activities of this district. As Scott noted, we have to hold each other accountable. We cannot, as a board, silently tolerate the disruptive, inappropriate actions of a board member, let alone a board officer. From the reports that I received from other individuals in that room, yourself aside, your actions were unbecoming of a board member and certainly unbecoming of a board officer, and they're not representative of our district, they're not representative of our board. And I'm just, I'm very discouraged by what occurred. It is interesting to me that your recollection of events was drastically different than everybody else's in their room. Thank you for letting me share.
Of course. Let me just, you said a lot, and I made a couple comment notes as you were saying to reply. I want to be brief. I'm going to try to also include you, if you don't mind. I think it'll also, so, just tag this along, we do need to come back to this. You said this is not an isolated incident, and I don't know what you're talking about because I have always conducted myself publicly and with the utmost integrity. So, when you say something like that, you need to come back at a later time, and you can discuss it with the board president. I would appreciate you can email me, I would welcome that. So, I wanted to tell you that. And as you were reflecting on those letters, I have also read the same letters. One of, actually, one of the letters was from city councilwoman, and she made, she pointed out that children are the most vulnerable, and often they don't speak out. And she's absolutely correct. Children are very vulnerable, and they don't always speak out, which is why we need adults in the room that will speak out and stand up for them on their behalf. You're absolutely right. Children do not have an agenda. Students don't have an agenda, but the adults do have an agenda. And so, that's what I find troubling. You asked me what I was disturbed by, because I had said I was disturbed by what I saw. I was disturbed by students being manipulated. And I can say, and I have been in classrooms, and I have taught, and I have, I believe that I know a little bit more about the psyche of children and their development. And I come with a lot of quote-unquote "lived experiences." I've seen this playbook before, and I recognize it. And I sat in that room as an adult, and I was reflecting on the trauma of indoctrination that I had experienced as a student. And so, I was not able to stand for it. Let me finish. I'm in receipt of those same letters, and it breaks my heart where one student went from, I didn't, you know, I read it really quickly today. It came late, so I didn't have time to read it several times as the ones that had come earlier, because this was just today. And this student said that, well, I had not raised my hand, and I might be not perfect on this because I read it only once, and I didn't raise my hand, but later on, after having gone through the session, I realized that even small things that can cause social anxiety. In retrospect, you know, the one time that I experienced this, and I guess I should have raised my hand. So, you could potentially be taking a child who's experiencing trauma in the form of parents who are absent, who may beat them, or may have vices, they may be drunk or high, or just not present, they may be cold, they may be hungry, they have all these traumas. Maybe they haven't experienced this form of racial trauma, but you're introducing that, and that's not something they feel. So, we have to be considerate of those students in the room. We don't want to take away from students who do experience it, but we don't want to pile on the students that don't already. And I'm sorry, but if we have, if I have somehow traumatized seventeen and eighteen-year-olds by telling them the truth, then we got bigger problems. I told, I told the truth, and that was an opportunity for the, for the moderator to say, "You know what? I think I miscounted, and some people experience this and some don't, but let's all talk about this."
When you left the room, she said that? You left when the students all turned around and started yelling and upset? She said that?
Well, good. I'm glad she did, because that would have been the proper way to have addressed it.
She also addressed the fact that if you were upset by what just happened, that would be racial trauma.
Pardon me?
So, Steve has a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we're missing something here.
Missing what?
Based on what I've read, what I've heard here from Dr. Mary Ann Mohammed Kani, we're not focusing on the simple fact that you have somebody, that's Kiki Rover from Bureau, that had lied to these students. Lied. This is something that SPS should not condone. And if somebody's going to sit and lie from somebody that we hire in order to provide services to the students within Springfield Public Schools, we need to take a look at who we're actually putting in front of these kids. There's no reason whatsoever that this presenter should have lied to the children. Now, we're really interested in protecting our kids. We should take a serious look at somebody lying to our children and giving them a false situation. That's not what I want.
So, having debriefed the students during the following session because they were still talking about it after lunch, and we couldn't get them to refocus on the rest of the sessions, the students came together and decided that they wanted to talk about what had happened because they felt like they still hadn't gotten things off their chest. And so, I had several students in the room, one of them are students of whom I knew personally, who said, as a male, that he did not raise his hand, and so he knew people didn't raise his hand. He says, "But, you know, it's kind of like in church where, you know, they ask you if you want to be saved, if you want to raise your hand." Well, some people don't want to raise their hand in front of other people, so they didn't raise their hand. I also had a student said that they didn't raise their hand because they, they recognized that this particular session, that particular moment wasn't for them because they were not a black student. And the students who didn't raise their hand said, they, it didn't matter to them that everyone didn't raise their hand, it was the, it was the sentiment that was important. I have a written statement from a student here that says this, "As someone who didn't raise their hand, I understand that the presenter was just making a general statement. The lady behind us' words were very unneeded." So, the students are not uninformed enough to understand what was happening in the moment. It was not a gentle, "There were only ten people raising their hands." It was a very challenging comment, because as the, as you stated, you were upset about this lie that was told. And how do you know it was a lie versus a, a, just a miscount or, you know, a difference of what you see? Because I was sitting in the front, I don't see, I didn't see how many people were in the back. I don't know if someone raised their hand slightly and you didn't see their hand, or there were students that they didn't raise their hand, but whether it was ten or twenty, the students were very clear that it didn't matter to them whether it was all of them or some of them. They recognized the need for having the conversation regardless of whether or not they had experienced it or not.
The students...
The simple fact that is a lie, period. There's no getting around it. You can make all the excuses you want.
I'm not making excuses.
Yes, you are. And right now, right now, I think that we need to be considered...
Break in. You need to identify, what is your lie? When you say, "She lied," what liar you refer to?
Everybody raised their hand.
She said that everybody raised their hand. Why would that person, the presenter, actually do that? I mean, to me, I don't condone that whatsoever. If you want to try to make an excuse...
I'm not. I just want to understand why that's so egregious for you guys.
I'm talking.
I hear you talking, but I'm asking you a question. Why is that so egregious for you all? Because the students didn't find it to be egregious at all.
Obviously, I'm not going to get an opportunity to get in here.
They're, they're adults.
Obviously, I'm not going to get a word in here, edgewise.
Okay, so I'm going to... She's the one who's interrupting you.
No, you interrupt. No, you interrupted me.
I'm going to try to bring this back into order. So here's where we are on this. So when we say someone's...
Someone has a smile like that?
I was smiling at you because you frowned at me. I don't like to frown.
Okay, stop. So when we say someone lied, that's, we weren't there. I wasn't there, I don't know, you weren't there. We do know what we have in our letters. We do know from our students. But I think we're losing sight of what happened. We're getting distracted. And so, I would like for you to direct your attention to what we got from MSBA. And what it talks about, we are a member of the public, setting a good example. So, it goes back to when Mary Ann went to this event, and she did not like what the presenter said. And she did not like the context.
I didn't say I didn't like what the presenter said. I did not say that. I didn't say anything about the content of what the presenter said. I mean, yes, I think that the presenter should have talked about things like getting enough sleep, how to get into a better environment, eating better.
So you wanted to craft her presentation. Right, you did not.
I had no intention of saying anything like that. And nor did I.
Your comment, but you...
I said seven words.
You challenged what she said.
I did not challenge her. I said, I, I thought maybe she doesn't know how to count. Or maybe she was distracted.
If only we had an audio recording of what occurred. Because this is drastically different from everybody else's perception of what occurred in that room, including our students who were trying to engage in an academic...
So getting back to the, yeah, the point, trying to make, so whatever happened. If we go back to look at, we have, I, we have a number of letters that came from people that were there, and what they say. But, here is, if you look at what MSBA tells us is "Our role and responsibility as board members." And on the second page, second paragraph, it says, "Most board members want to help the school district in any way they can." And sometimes, that gets board members into trouble. "The school board is charged with monitoring district process, making long-term plans, setting budget," which we know. "Board members are not ambassadors for family or friends who have problems, not charged with investigating complaints, and should not directly evaluate individual staff members." In other words, it goes on to say, "A board member who visits school buildings to check out concerns or to fix problems is overstepping her, his, or her role." Instead, the board member should come, should share any complaints with the superintendent, and allow the district staff to do their job. So in this instance, what would have been ideal is to, if you chose to attend the event, and there was something in the event that was problematic or troubling, as you have shared with us. You bring that back to the superintendent, rather than putting yourself into this, you know, disrupting, or challenging, or whatever happened. Because then, that is what has brought us to where we are tonight. That we would not even be having this discussion.
Had that not happened?
I disagree. I disagree, because we would not be here today if Kiki Rover would not have lied to those students. That's it. We would not be here chastising a current... Yes, yes, we are.
Yes, you are.
A board member. It's inappropriate.
Without notice.
What's inappropriate is lying to the students. We hire Burrell in order to uphold the most integrity, honesty, and with respect to these students. And here's somebody that violated that.
I'll say, clearly identify, because this is going to come back again. So clearly identify for us the lie.
As the testimony is from Mary Ann Mohammed-Khaney is, Kiki Rover, or Rover, excuse me, had indicated that all students had raised their hand in response to whether they had felt some type of trauma, racial trauma. When in fact, that's not what happened. There was only 10, according to the testimony of Dr. Mohammed-Khaney.
And she did not close her eyes. She raised her hand. She counted 10.
Whether she closed her eyes or not, I'm coming back to the fact that she lied.
Okay.
She lied to the students.
I didn't know she was going to say that, so I didn't count. It's an estimate.
You don't have to be smart like that. You can ask for the board president's permission to...
I'm asking you, because you seem to get upset when I talk, so...
No, I get upset when you interrupt me.
I have a question.
We just want to get to what Steve has identified as the lie.
Well, here, here's my recollection, which actually differs from Mary Ann's. And again, I was sitting among the students in the front of the, of the space. And what I heard was, "I want you all to know that just about everybody raised their hand."
No, she said, and I quote, "I just want you all to know that every single person in the room raised their hand, because this is real."
It is real.
Because you said so.
No, because their experience of the five students, the one student raised her hand, it's real.
But it wasn't every single student.
So then, those one who did raise their hand, she's negated.
What is she doing to all the students who didn't?
Those students said that they are okay with it. They understood it.
I don't care. They are students. There is no reason to lie to them.
So it was your intention, then, to, to do what by saying that at that moment? What was your intention?
I wanted the students to all be validated. I want Kiki Rover, is that her name?
And the students all felt validated.
Because you have manipulated them.
I didn't manipulate them.
I just want to note that in the reports, the newsletter, that Kiki said that she said most hands went up. And again, I want to reiterate that when we go to the student statements, the people who have no agenda whatsoever, their statements that they provided to this board were that the disruption was concerning, their safe place was violated. It had nothing to do with how many people raised their hand. I don't have any more comments on this particular topic, but I do think, Denise, your motion did talk about what, what are the steps?
Can I just make one more statement before? I'm sorry. If this topic is, if the topic was brain health and, let me, you know, I actually have, I thought I brought it with me. So, you stayed there for the rest of the event?
I did not.
For that session?
I did not.
Okay, so if, if it's about brain, do you know what other things, what other slides?
The first slide that I walked in on said, "This is what a healthy brain looks like. What do you guys need for a healthy brain?" And students were engaged, very engaged. They said things like, sleep, food, water, friendship, safety, friendships. All those things are things they said. Then she talked about a, the next slide was on a traumatic brain, what happened to the brain. She talked about different neural pathways that happened. And then she talked about the racially trauma slide. And that's when the discussion ended. They had a hard time getting the students to refocus on the rest of the slides, because they were traumatized by your experience, your words.
They were traumatized?
By your words. That's what they said.
Can I also...
That's what the students said. The children were traumatized by you.
The high school seniors.
The high school seniors were traumatized by you.
Ready to go out to the world.
Were traumatized by the safe space that you disrupted, that they were closing their eyes to be in the moment, to make themselves vulnerable. And then someone came to disrupt that moment.
So they closed their eyes, and they were lied to, while their eyes were closed. And you stand, you sit here as an adult, and you condone that we need to maintain the safe space that is alive.
Had you given the presenter the opportunity, there may have been an opportunity to have additional conversations about what had happened. But you disrupted the moment, and she had a very difficult time regaining the attention of the students in that room.
There were many other things that were on those slides.
You saw them?
I think there's a clear difference of opinions. Are there any other comments that would be beneficial for the board to have?
I'd like a chance.
Go ahead, Kelly.
I find all this really interesting. Danielle, I do appreciate that you asked Mary Ann to recount the events. We've seen some articles and heard from a lot of people. It's good that we do hear from her. I do find it interesting that, after hearing her statements, you went on to continue with the written statement that went on the presumptions prior to hearing her statements.
I changed it a little bit.
I would also like to ask Sharita, since you were the other person of us that was there.
Yes.
I'm kind of interested in facts here, because there's a lot of subjectivity on, you know, what, what's a disruption? And who is offended, or who's space, space was violated, or whatever. But as far as the facts are concerned, Mary Ann seemed to lay out just the factual basis of recounting these events. So do you disagree with anything that she said about how she described, I guess, the facts?
Yes, I do.
Can you point to those?
I kind of did already, but I'll recount them again. I can say that the way that she expressed, that she said, "There were seven people, or 10 people raised their hand," it was very aggressive towards the presenter, in a challenging way. And that was what disrupted the students. It's like, well, what's going on here? Otherwise, the students would have not even gotten upset about it. But it was the way that it was said, it was, it was the disruption of this moment of them being vulnerable. You know, this idea that we have this YES conference, and these are seniors, they've been to YES for the last three years. And so, they've experienced this opportunity for them to create this, this space for them to be in a room with other people who look like them, and to express themselves. And then it being challenged by someone from the back in this very aggressive kind of way. The students expressed during the extra, the second time that we met with them, because they were still talking about it, that for some of them, it wasn't what was said. For some of them, it was how it was said. And they also were upset that after making the disruption, that she just left, and didn't have the opportunity to engage with them, because now she's like, telling them that the presenter is, you know, like, what was your point in saying that? Like, okay, there were 10 people. The students were upset that, that she left, didn't have that, didn't come back until apologized to, from disrupting, because again, she left, and 15, 20 minutes of students are just talking. It seems, it's hard to get students back on track, once they get off track. And so, they were upset that she left, and they were upset by the way that she did that.
Thank you. I, I would like to echo what Steve said. I do think that there's something, that, to me, the most important thing we're talking about here is, that, that seems to be overlooked, is, was there someone lying to our students? And I certainly don't condone that. Mary Ann's account of it seems to say that there was a lie, and...
In her way of, was it appropriate? Was Mary Ann's way of addressing the lie appropriate, in your opinion?
Well, all I know is the words that she said. So if you, I can't, inflection is subjective, so...
If she asked the question to the presenter, is she challenged? Or she, she had an alternate perspective of what the presenter presented? And she said...
Reality is the reality, is the reality. There's no alternate perspective of how many people raised their hand.
And she didn't disagree with you. She said, okay.
Yes, she said, okay. She did say, okay. And then she said, oh, consider that for the next time. I.e., for my next hustle, I'm going to have to figure out a way to do this better.
Her next hustle, that's not, that is so inappropriate for you to say that about her. Name-calling, it's rude. This is the kind of thing that you do on a regular basis.
No, I know.
Yeah, it is, is what you do on a regular basis.
When you lie to children...
These people see you do it on a regular basis.
When you lie to children to further an agenda, as a health...
You had an agenda.
As a healthcare provider, it is.
Okay, I'm going to back this up, because I think we have what is the bottom line here.
I'd like to finish.
Kelly needed to finish something. But I think we're to the bottom line, and that is the lie. Basically, the lie is about the number of students that raised their hand. That's it.
No, it's not. Because we would not be here if it wasn't for the lie.
We would not be here if Mary Ann had not...
Nope.
challenged a speaker that had a right to have her presentation. Mary Ann had a question about that, she comes back to our superintendent.
I respectfully disagree, and here's why.
We have a right to ask questions.
As you say, she acted disrespectfully. She wouldn't have supposedly acted disrespectfully if there wasn't a lie. So the lie is what caused supposedly her disrespecting.
Well, that's kind of a tough call, when you've got kids with their heads down, eyes closed. Mary Ann's in the back of the room, the speaker's in the front. So who, if we re- stage that, who's going to be able to know for sure about that number?
I just want to make sure I go on the record that I don't, I don't condone any presenter, or teacher, instructor, and that, to lie to the students. There's no need for it. And, and I don't think that we would be here today if, if this individual wouldn't have lied.
Okay.
I'd like to finish.
And we're going to let Kelly finish up, and then we're going to let Scott have his say, and then we're going to move forward. Because I think we've beat this horse down to where we've basically... But I do hope that all board members will take the opportunity to read all the letters we got from MSU, from Burrell Mental Health, from NAACP, from our own staff members who were there in the event that sent us there, sent us what they witnessed, and then our students. So we'll go back to that. But Kelly, finish.
So I, I get, so just a statement. I'd like to say I fully support Mary Ann and her discretion.
Did you say of course you?
Yeah, yeah, I did.
Well, so you fully support her in attending the event?
Let me, I'll just make my statement, please. Fully support Mary Ann and her discretion. I think that I've come to trust her track record, and I believe what she said about the facts of this situation. I fully believe her account of these events. And more concerning to me, as Steve mentioned, are the actions of Burrell's employee lying to our students. I don't understand a defense of that. If Mary Ann's account was that she said the simple words, something to the effect of, "Only 10 people raised their hands," after this employee said, "Every single one raised their hands," then I don't see it as being a huge deal. And would I have handled it that way? Maybe not. And maybe in the future, going forward, just simply keeping your mouth shut and reaching out to the superintendent would be the best way to go. However, since these events have happened, I am very concerned with lying to our students under the disguise of being in whatever a safe space is. Furthermore, I'm concerned with the people who weren't there, who have condemned Mary Ann, based on essentially hearsay. And some of these are our partners. I'm the leader of Missouri State. The leader of Burrell, unless he was in the room, I'm not aware. And there were others. I don't think it's the healthier, mature thing to do to pass judgment without having any way of understanding exactly what happened. And I don't think it's been fair to you, Mary Ann. And if there's a way to understand what happened factually, then maybe my mind could be changed. But based on what you said, and no factual disagreement with what she said, other than the inflection of the way she said it, I can't...
What about the students' response? Do you care about her response?
I care about their response.
Of the student who said she was hurt?
And I, I care about them being hurt by being lied to.
But she didn't say that she was hurt by that. She was hurt by Mary Ann's disruption of that moment.
Doesn't mean she wasn't hurt.
Maybe she's been lied to for years. And that's what we did to them.
I'm finished, thank you.
I hope that moving forward, that all of you, when you see children being manipulated and lied to, will stand up for them. and lied to, will stand up for them. They depend on us.
Don't cry, it's okay.
I'm not crying.
No, it's fine, don't cry.
They depend on you and on me.
They do. You saw how many students in that room knew me, and know that they can depend on me. Those students know me, they trust me.
Thank you for interrupting.
And I work with them and for them on a regular basis.
Kiki's not here to defend herself, and I just want to reiterate that in the article on the news leader, thank you Claudette, she said that, she stated, "Most students raised their hands, not all students," and I will also, yes, you're right, it is hearsay, right? We're listening, we're hearing second-hand. We are also hearing second-hand from two of our board members, who also experienced different things in that room, and so we're, again, I wanna just say that the reports that we're getting back from the students was not, oh, it was this many students who raised their hand, or that many students who raised their hand, it was the disruption that occurred, and how they felt that their safe space had been invaded by somebody who was not invited to participate.
And that is why we are having this discussion, because of the number of people that brought that board to us. It's not about the lying
Do we have to be invited to, if there is a school-sanctioned event, and we inform, or usually we say, "Hey, we're gonna be coming, one is a good time, one is a good day," this is the avenue where we speak. As elected bodies of this board with an electorate, do I feel, what is communicated to me, is that there is an expectation, that we look, we observe, so that it helps us in making decisions moving forward. I've been in many classrooms in the last two weeks, like I said, I've been to six different schools at various levels, elementary, middle, and high school. I feel that it allows me to do my job.
When you're invited.
No, I
Or you can make a request.
Let me finish. So sometimes I'm invited, and sometimes I make a request.
Through the appropriate channels.
Through the appropriate channels, and in this case, I did it through the appropriate channels.
I disagree with that.
How, I, please clarify how you disagree with that. This was not an SPS event.
It was a partnership with SPS.
And there was somebody in charge of that, and I called that somebody
That person was not in charge, I'm on that committee, that person was not in charge.
Well, then maybe the person, when it says RSVP2, maybe the flyer needs to be updated and corrected.
That person was the person, just because you're the person who's RSVP, and doesn't mean that you're over everything. There was a committee that included SPS members, included the Missouri State members, and included NAACP members.
Included a lot of people. The article that Denise has provided from MSBA goes over what a board member should do appropriately to enter any sort of school event, whether it's on campus or off campus. We cannot act individually, and we don't have special privileges just because we're on the school board. We act collectively, and I
I disagree with you.
MSBA doesn't.
We don't have a board policy. We do have special privileges, because we were elected. So I have the privilege of writing an email to Dr. Lathan and saying, "I would like to go visit Hillclash High School."
And they don't have to let you.
They don't, but I have that privilege.
That's not a special privilege, anybody can ask her that. We do not have special privileges.
They do have to let me, on a day that works for them, maybe not today, maybe not tomorrow, but at some point. Well, then, we need to have a discussion.
They do, but they don't have to be, they do allow you to be there during the school hours, when students are there, they can let you do it after hours. You do not get the privilege of doing extra stuff just because you're a school board member.
Well, I, we will agree to disagree.
MSBA is one that says that, and we've seen time and time again where you don't think the rules apply to you.
That's not true.
So, okay, we will, we all need to review this, we need to go back and look at our school board member ethics, and we also need to remember that we are elected, but we serve as volunteers, and we are just one person of a seven-member board, and we really have no authority outside the boardroom, unless specifically appointed. So even our visits to school buildings or school events are the same as other members of the public. So inappropriate for us to attend a meeting and use our elected position to do anything other than to visit. We do not have the authority to change the results in the meetings, we do not have the authority to interject our thoughts into any kind of a presentation or meetings. We're there to visit, and we're there to basically set a good example, and so that's what we want to continue to do as we move forward. I don't know, Scott, did I see your hand go up? You haven't, do you have anything else you wanna add at this point?
Not at this time, I'm just sorry, different times, so I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, so it was incumbent upon me to bring this forward at a meeting, and I've had a couple questions. Why? Well, because this has spiraled within the last couple of days. Maryam did contact me on Friday, I did have a day full of meetings, busy weekend, I told her I would try to, what worked for her on Monday, and she responded that she would take care of it with the superintendent, and then had requests to get this on the agenda. Felt like we needed to do it at this time while people were
Can I ask you, how many people asked you to put it on the agenda?
Many community partners, and school board members, school board members too.
Two school board members?
Yes.
Okay. So are you saying that if two school board members asked you to put something on the agenda?
I'm not gonna say anything, Maryam. I have, in the past, if school board members asked for something to put on the agenda, I've tried to put it on
And I wanna be clear, Denise, you did not put it on the agenda. You made a motion, there was a second, and there was a vote.
So it came forward, just like I have had several of you in the past, have given me no notice, and we come to a board meeting, and then you tell me you wanna put something on the agenda, or you wanna take something off
Do you think it was appropriate that you knew of this and didn't contact me?
I only knew of this in time to try to get this on the agenda tonight, and I only did it as amend the agenda, and if the board had voted no, it would not have been on the agenda. So I followed Robert's rules, after a lot of consulting with people
As my mentor and fellow board officer, I think that I would have, I think it would have been a professional and a respectful thing to do, to have just given me a heads-up, even if it's by 20 minutes.
We had a little activity going on here this afternoon, so that
What activity?
You know what activity was going on this afternoon.
Yeah, but it wasn't our board activity.
Yeah. It was enough, it kept me preoccupied, and again, I did not know if this would be voted on to even come on the agenda, and it did, so
Well, I think you did, because we walked into a stock of paperwork.
Yeah, and that I could have left for you, for you to review, and it didn't have to come forward. So I am finished with any more discussion on it. However, I will respond to, you made a mention, you mentioned that I made a comment in news leader, and that comment was simply, to answer the question that came to me, was the board aware of this event? And absolutely, the board, or the district was aware because of numerous phone calls, emails, and, what else? I don't know. Several contacts.
But you didn't tell me about the phone calls and emails.
No.
That's what I'm referring to.
They came into the board, and so
What do you mean by the board, to you?
No, they came to the district. They came into the district. So whenever I was notified, they were coming forward. I answered the question from our news reporter, that yes, we were aware that we were getting communication. So that did not require me
When you say "me," you mean "I," because the first we heard about it
The district.
The district, thank you.
So that did not require me to answer, and that was a very neutral statement.
I understand.
Okay. At this time, let's see, what else do we have to put into that?
I think your motion had three parts to it.
So let me find that. So this is not fun, and I hate that we're even here, so really, so, is there a motion, so are there any comments? So yeah, the three parts that were brought forward. Can you help me with that? Is anyone, I don't have it. It's in all my papers somewhere.
I wrote it down, and I cannot find it.
What motion is this?
This is the one
Her motion to put the
Motion to amend the agenda, to add to, which we did, and so with that, I said that I would provide a review of complaints, which, we all have those. We received about a dozen communications from the public, a review of board member ethics and duties, which I provided from MSBA, that is, the Missouri School Board Association, that provides to all board members, this is how a board member should, roles and responsibilities, and we each get that when we do our training, that's nothing new to board members, and then board consideration of appropriate action. For those individuals that have sent us numerous letters, they have all asked for various actions. So at that point, we have to, as a board, discuss that, so if there's actions, if any, so
I do have a motion, and I don't take this motion lightly, and it's just, there's been a pattern of behavior, and to me, this is the last straw. I am not going to go over the list of grievances regarding the continued pattern of behavior, except to note that it's unbecoming of a board member, and not somebody that I feel is appropriate to be a board officer, and I am gonna make a motion to reorganize the vice president's position, and nominate Scott Price as vice president of Board of Education.
Second. Okay, so at this time, we have a motion to reorganize the board. Let me go back to my board. We do have board policy that does allow for the reorganization of the board at any time. In addition to officer elections, that reorganization meetings held after each board election, the board may reorganize by electing new officers at any public board meeting. In such case, if the current board officer is still willing to serve, election of new officer requires an affirmative vote of a majority of the whole board. So at this time, we have a motion for, to elect Scott Price as the vice president. Danielle, we do have a second, by Sharita. At this time, we open the floor to questions. Hearing none.
I would like to talk.
You what?
I'd like to speak.
Okay.
I just wanted, my comments earlier surrounded this whole issue being on, essentially, I'm not an attorney, essentially hearsay, and now we have apparently at least two board members who have decided they want to, I guess, punish a board member based on some other people's accounts that, as far as I can tell, boil down to, she said a handful of words, and it was really how she said it, and I just find this laughable, honestly, I really do.
And I'll just repeat myself again, that this is not an isolated incident, this is a pattern of behavior. To me, this is the last straw, it's unbecoming of a board member, unbecoming of a board officer, and not somebody that I want in a leadership role on our board. And again, I'm not going to list out every single, and I don't have a list, I've not sat down and made a list, and I'll leave it up to each individual board member to decide if the actions that you've taken are appropriate for an officer.
So you don't like that I sometimes vote differently than you?
That is absolutely not the case.
Okay, because I conduct myself very publicly, and so
There are oftentimes that other board members vote differently than I do, and there's awkward times that I'm in a minority. Seeing that we spent over an hour on this, when reality is, we are all here to make sure that our children are set up to enter our community as productive citizens, whatever that looks like, I am not going to get into now back and forth. Every single board member has sat here since at least April, and has information on some of the actions that you have taken.
Publicly.
Publicly, and privately as well, and I will just leave it up to each individual board member to make a determination.
Good job, Maryam. Stand behind you.
Please leave.
What a public shaming.
You may leave. Okay, so Kelly, are you finished?
I also wanna make sure, I certainly wasn't aware of this, I just wanna make sure that there wasn't like a walking quorum going on here, because it seemed very, like Maryam mentioned, there's a stack of papers in front of us. There was a process of Robert's rules that people who didn't always have a great grip on, seem to have a good grip on tonight. So I just wanna be very clear
Please speak more to that.
I told her, I told our president of my intention, yes, so that she could prepare for this evening.
Yeah, but please speak more to what you just said about people having better grips on Robert.
Yeah, I'd be happy to finish. I just want to give anyone an opportunity to make sure that we didn't have more than three board members discussing this plan tonight.
I absolutely assure you that that was not the case.
Okay. Would you like to comment?
I would not.
No comment?
No comment.
Scott, would you like to comment?
Had no awareness of what was happening.
Did you re-brief what you said?
He's asking if more than three board
I'm asking if you had any understanding of this vote to remove Maryam as vice president prior to this meeting.
Did I have any understanding of the move, Maryam as vice president before this meeting? Any answer to the yes? To be honest with you, I have to, we were talking honesty here.
Yes, Scott and Denise were made aware of this. I had had no communications to Sharita. And I'm certain that there are other
Stop talking in your ear. Is there something in your ear?
Is there something in your ear?
No, in yours.
Yes, there is. Is it electronic? No. But if you'd like more details on something that's personal, you're welcome to ask outside of the meeting.
I'm gonna say, I'm certain that there are other times that there are groups of three board members who get together to communicate about things, which is exactly what I did prior to this board meeting, but at no point did I have any conversations with
No violation of, no more than three people that might get together and discuss something, no violation of Robert's rules.
Denise, you didn't discuss this with Sharita?
I have not talked to Denise. I just told you that I didn't.
And as we have, other things have come to me from board members, that they wanna pull something off, put something on. We'll do it, we don't know if it's gonna be voted on by the board, but I have to put it on.
I just wanna be clear that we're not violating sunshine law here, because that would be incredibly
I notified our
Let me finish. That would be incredibly ironic, given some of the claims that were laid tonight, and this certainly
More than welcome to
I don't appreciate the accusation at all.
I didn't accuse.
I notified our board president of my intention this evening, and I notified the individual that I was going to nominate, and that was it.
I didn't accuse. You gave your answer, I asked others.
Keep pressuring, and the answer is still, "No, we did not violate sunshine."
It is possible that if one of the other members that you talked to talked to another member, that there would be a walking quorum, and that concerns me. If you're saying no, I will take you on your word, but you also don't know what other people said.
No, what's that anything?
And it sounds like if there were three board members coming to a conclusion here, that's very close to a walking quorum, so it does concern me on if any of those three members mentioned to another board member.
They did.
I was more involved today with trying to clear my name of false allegations, so I have had no time other than teaching my classes and dealing with other threats against me. That's all I've been doing today.
Threats against you?
Yes.
Please, shall we vote? The kinds of threats that I get on Facebook?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so not, like, somebody didn't actually come to you?
Oh, yes, that too.
Please, shall we vote?
Okay, so the thing is, and so Kelly, hold it down to the numbers. Again, I'm gonna go back to the letters that we got from students. I believe the bottom line here is that we, as a board, of all our responsibilities is to look for, is looked to, we owe to our students, and we have a number of students that have indicated to us, and that took a lot of courage, of how this made them feel, and I think that has been a hallmark of my service on this board, is that we do the right thing, we keep our focus on students. We have lost our focus on our students, and that is my concern, is how we have made some of our students feel through this event, and we as board members, and I would have, whether this came up or not, I would have brought this information forward from MSBA, and our board member ethics, just as a reminder to us of, as we're moving forward in this very contentious time ahead of us with board elections, and our bond issue, that we need to be responsible, and we need to keep our focus on our kids, not politics. So anyway, I'm concerned about this for our students. So anyway, that's what I have to say, that it's not about numbers, and it's not about all this other stuff. It's about that we did upset some of our students, so this was an upsetting event for students. So, okay, we're ready to vote then. So the motion is that Scott Price is a motion and a second for board vice president. Of course, all of you know that is short term, because the board will reorganize on April the 11th, in which you will vote new board president and new board vice president. And so this is short term, but it is where we are. So at this time, we will take a vote. Do we have it? I know we don't have this prepared. It's coming up, so we will have to go around. So, I'll poll. So we will, I don't care where we start.
Aye.
So, Steve?
Aye.
Sharita, aye.
Aye.
No? Aye?
Aye.
No.
So Scott, I'm sorry, I left you out.
First, aye.
Okay, so majority is that we have a, that Scott will just, will continue with, from this point till April 11th, as board vice president.
Maryam, do you want to change your seat?
Oh, would you like me to do it now?
No, stay where you are. Stay where you are. We're just doing what we hate to do. So, okay, while it's now 7:42, and we have to move on to...
Business.
Steve?
I know you want to move on, but you had indicated that you wanted to focus on our students, and your concern about the students and everything. And in that light, I think that we should consider a letter of admonishment to Kiki Rover for lying to our students. We should expect better from our presenters, our instructors, the people in which we hire. If it's found to be true, that she should be admonished as well.
She's not our employee, and we can probably, we got a letter that, from her CEO, CJ Davis, and that would be something for him to take up.
And it's something that we can, as a board, represent our students by saying that we do not allow this type of activity.
If you believe you have...
Anybody, anybody that we contract with, for the care of our students.
I will repeat that she's not here to defend herself, and if you believe that you have the support of the board, go ahead and make a motion.
I'll thank you so much.
So, do you at this time?
I'm not making a motion at that time. I'm just going to bring it up. We need to discuss this further.
So that could be a board agenda item for the next meeting.
Thank you.
So it'll be a board agenda item for the next meeting?
Just ask.
Okay, I would, I would like to second that ask.
Fine.
Me as well.
And what would your board agenda item say?
I want to look into this further to find out just exactly what was said. If in fact, that we have somebody out there lying to our students, and we're supposed to focus on our students.
About the number of students that raised their hand.
That's correct.
So if she said 10, and there were nine, she was lying to that also?
As I gather from the testimony of Dr. Maryam Mohammedkani, which we can go back and listen to and watch, Kiki Rover said all students, when in fact, Dr. Maryam Mohammedkani said only 10. It wasn't all.
I said about.
About 10.
Kiki says that she said about also.
She is not here to defend herself. The article did not use the word all. I do not want to waste any more time dragging her name through the mud, and she's not here. If you guys want to keep talking about this, that's fine, but I'm not going to stay.
Well, we're talking about next time, in March.
That's right.
Okay, very good. Let's move on. We've got 3.02. Let's do consent agenda items, and then we're going to take a break. So 3.02, 3, 6, or whatever it is now.
6.01, it's correct.
Consent agenda items. So these items were all presented to us at the February 14th, 2023 study session for review, and board members were given the opportunity to ask questions at that time, as well as additional information and questions answered by email. So our recommended actions, the board approved consent agenda items 3.02 through 6.01. Do I have a motion to move?
You mean 4.01 through 7.01?
Yeah.
Because we moved everything up, right?
No, it's correct.
3.02, because we made the agenda, I fixed it 3.01. So this is 3.02 through...
6.01.
6.01. So do we have, we have a motion by Sharita?
Can you clarify what that shows us, so I make sure I didn't?
Is it what you see? You see the consent?
I'm seeing it as 5.01 through 5.07, is that correct? Or 4.01 through 5.07?
No, no.
Through 6.01.
3.01.
Down to 6.01. So it's like the normal stuff, you see the numbers just shift.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I, Kelly, I just...
And I'm sorry, before we vote on this, and this may be a stupid question, but the, the annualized pay issue, I'm not sure where that is.
It's not on here.
Okay, just wanted to make sure it wasn't within 6.01. Okay, or whatever it is now, so thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we have a, we have a motion by Sharita, we have a second. Danielle, did you second?
I did not second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I will second, that's fine.
Okay, and so at this time, we need to vote. These are things we've been talking about for some time. And Scott?
Oh, he's able to vote?
You're able to vote? Okay, excellent, so we're moving on. However, it is 7:47, let's just take a few minute break, please. We're going to move on to treasurer's report at this time. So, the treasurer's report includes the items of interest report, and we have already, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, Dr. Molford, will come to the podium. Thank you, Dr. Mol.
All right, I'll make this quick, but as you see in the treasurer's report, we're continuing to track as projected. You'll see a little bit of a slight dip in the ended, ending of the year projected fund balance, but still around that 25% mark. Couple of items of note, we received two grants that have been reflected now in the budget. One is an Afghan refugee grant, and so it was about $700,000, and that's just to support EDL students that would qualify. The other one is the School Based Mental Health Immediate Responsive Services Grant, big mouthful, but that's a little over $200,000, and we're using that for three additional school-based counselors. One at Kickoo, one at Carview, and one split between Disney and St. John's, and that will be for next school year. So we're excited about getting those additional funds. And the other thing of note is, we have begun collective bargaining. Usually that picks up in February, so we have had our first couple of meetings that will be going on over the next couple of months. And once that is finalized, we'll bring to the board the recommended dates to our collective bargaining agreements. So with that said, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to take those at this time. Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me which document has those grants?
That, well, it is the budgets, the one that's the budget amendment. Let me see here, Budget Realignment is the one.
Right.
Yep. If you go down that first, on the left column, if you go down to the last two items on that first section, IRSG is the...
No, I didn't mean the dollar amounts, but I guess I just want to learn a little bit more about the grants. Like, tell me about the English language learners, Afghani grant, can you tell, can you say just a little bit about that?
I cannot speak to that. However, Dr. Rains, you might have some information that he can speak to. Yes. As far as you're talking about what it will be used for?
No, what is, what is this money, where is it coming from? How much are we getting?
We're getting about $700,000, and it's, and I've got...
Is it tied to a certain number of students to qualify? Like, how do we get this?
So, most of the, most of the school districts in the state that have ELD students, qualified ELD students, have, are allocated funds, and so we, based on the number that we have, they give us a certain amount of money. And so it's $700,000. It's specific things that can be used for professional development for teachers, we can supplement some transportation costs for ELD students. What else do we have on there? We do have some, yes, yeah.
Parent education.
Parent education, some of the money...
So think about if, parent education around, explain, understanding the process, holding special sessions to help parents, and say, for example, we just pushed out information about explore, right? So we could hold special sessions to help parents of ELD students to get enrolled. Think about SPS University having those special sessions where we might be devoted, and say, here's a session, opportunity for parents of second language students, just different parent educational opportunities.
Okay, is there, okay, so why is it called, why did the word Af...
That's just what the grant was, the call for the grant was. I, I'm not sure why they called it that.
So it's professional development, that's a lot of money. I'm just trying to wrap my head around that. But does it have interpretive, interpretation services for the families? Like, I know we use that, the one where we call.
Language line, yeah.
But is the language line, but does it provide for tutors, for the kids, English tutors? Are we using the money?
We can provide that, some of it can be used for summer enrichment for those students, tutors in the summer. So, yeah, we have, we, there, there's like, America, Dr. Lincoln, hers is our director, has, has got line itemed out what she hopes to spend the grant on once we're awarded it.
We'll have small, like tutors for the students to learn English.
That could be one thing we spent the grant money on, yes.
Okay, and then do we just then turn around and report to the federal government, this is how we spent it?
Yes, there are certain things that have to be coded that align to what the grant can be spent on.
I'd be very interested in seeing how we use those funds.
And we can provide that information.
What's it called again? Thank you.
It's the, right here.
Yeah, it's called the Afghan Refugee Grant, so that's, that's one. And then we also got a mental health one, Dr. Roffers got one, School Based Mental Health Immediate Responsive Services Grant, so that's the second event that we will notify of.
I just want to clarify why I'm asking. I have an opportunity with, to meet some of those families, actually, tomorrow, and I want to be able to communicate this great news and how they're going to see it. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Like you said, it's a lot of money. We were excited when we learned it.
It's very...
We're going to get a lot of money.
And the mental health one is S R funds at this stage.
How much is that one?
It's like 210, I think.
I'm not...
Right in there. Right there.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll take a motion. Maryam made the motion, and Steve is second, so at this time, we can vote.
Thank you, John. And Brett.
Moving on to 8.01, there are no information reports. And then to 9.01, board policy, E D D L, adoption revision. The recommended action is the board adopt policy, E D D L as presented. Do I have a motion?
A move.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Danielle, second. At this time, we need to vote.
There's a chance to comment, correct?
Yes, do you have a question or a comment? This is one that's been with us since January 17th.
Not on this one, thank you, but I will on one of the other.
So this one, no question? Please vote.
Oops, I changed that vote.
Okay, Steve, do you have a vote change?
Do.
Okay. And Tammy just changed that for you?
I just, thank you very much.
Changed it? Okay, very good. So, motion carries. Moving on to 9.02, board policy, D J F, adoption revision. Again, these were right last January 17th, and we discussed them, came back on February 14th for additional discussion, are now in front of us this evening for a vote. Is this, so, do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll make a comment. Oh, sorry.
Let's go and make a motion.
Sure, I'll motion.
Kelly, second. Motion, and Sharita, Kelly made the motion, Sharita made the second, so it's on the floor. Kelly, questions?
As I mentioned in the prior meeting, I just feel that moving this threshold from 3,500 to 50,000 is too much. I'm going to vote no on this. Had it been, say, 15,000, I probably could have supported this, and should it fail and come back as such, then I guess I could support that, but I'll vote no on it as it's written now.
Did you hear any more questions of Dr. Molford on this? That this is a federal?
No.
It's only federal funds? Okay. Okay, so at this time...
I'd like to make a comment, too. John was really great about explaining this, and I, and I just, John, I want to thank you for all the time you took explaining policy DJF2 on purchasing, and I've listened to Kelly, and I've listened, heard John.
On this one?
Yeah, on this one. And, and I understand why they did this, but I, but I'm just putting it all together, and I also cannot support this number. I feel that it's too, too much, and I like, if this were to fail, I could support 15,000.
Okay, all right. Steve?
I just want to say, I had indicated 15,000 last time. I thought that was a reasonable number, and I want to stick to that, too. So I will vote no, unless we can get to that threshold.
And does all board members feel like that they understand this is the, as a federal? Okay, okay, good.
It's following the federal, but it's not for the federal dollars, it's for our dollars.
So at this time, we have... Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Scott. Yeah, jump in there.
We should probably always check.
Okay, yes. Here were 3,000 before, and now it's moving to 50,000. I think 50,000 is a reasonable number. It hasn't moved from 3,000 since, when, 2014?
John?
I understand, that's right.
Right, okay, that's what I remember, thank you for that. And I just want to say, too, that it's just not going through the formal bid process, okay? Right, John?
Correct.
It's, we're still going to get required free bids, correct?
That's our internal difference.
Yes.
There's a lot of work going through the formal bid process, and there's a lot of, a lot of work involved in that formal bid process, more, a lot more than getting free bids. And being in the work, you know, the experience I have through my work, is 50,000 not unreasonable. So I'm going to vote, and I accept the 50,000.
Okay, very good. So we have heard from everyone, I guess that wants to have something to say, and so we Motion carries. We will move on to board policy, I F, adoption revision. This policy was also brought forth at January 17th. We discussed it February 14th, as before, it's for action. Do I have a motion on for board policy, I F, adoption revision?
So moved.
Thank you, Sharita, do we have a second?
Sharita's first, motion, and I second.
Okay, Sharita, motion, Maryam's second. Maryam, okay, at this time, it's on the floor, questions?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
I like to pride myself on reading everything and noticing everything, and I want to say thank you so much for the work you've done with this, including both the, I call it the old M SIP and the new M SIP. But sometimes it takes a couple of reads to really see everything, and I had not noticed what was struck through, and I just, I don't like the way that's worded.
And I just, I don't like the way that's worded, and it's making me hesitate because I don't, I don't see why it's necessary.
Okay. Any other comments or questions about that?
Do I understand you to say, Dr. Mary Ann?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Do I understand you to say that you don't want any change to the policy at all? Is that correct?
Well, I don't, I don't see why we have to. It was, it just, it went from being rather specific and instructional and informative to just very vague. I don't like the way it's worded.
So you do not accept the changes?
It's confusing now. Um, no.
All right. So, any other questions?
Yeah, I'd also say, I, I don't, I also can't support this, and I just think it's strange that we would even take out the wording. Recognizes that curriculum development provides one of the most effective means of improving the quality of instructional programs. This seems strange to me that we're, I don't see what we're accomplishing. So I just don't want to support change for the sake of just changing things.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, let's move forward with the vote. This is the third one that's been before us.
I just did about 10 seconds ago. I had a little delay, but I did get it in.
So we need to do a verbal vote?
You can verbal me no. I can.
Did mine, did yours come through?
Verbal, yes, yeah. Because every time, every time I open one of these things, it pops up in there. I'll clear them all.
You may need to refresh your screens.
Mine came on.
Uh, no.
Name?
Yes. For the.
A.
I. I. I tried to go in order. It didn't work, okay. Uh, this is, no.
Your name. Sharita?
I.
A.
Susan A. Scott, we're taking a verbal on this one. Board Policy.
And this is a verbal, I think, proverbs?
This is on I F, S P F.
Oh, I F, okay.
Said I.
All right. Okay. I think we have it. Motion passes. Motion carries. A move. That's okay, we, for some reason, we didn't get a mark on our end. So, 9.03, we did it. Okay. Moving on. Unfinished business, 10.01. This came back around as we were discussing technology purchase for kindergarten Chrome Books. The recommended action is the board approve the purchase of kindergarten Chrome Books as presented. We did ask for our kindergarten teachers to weigh in on this. We received surveys from our kindergarten teachers that were pretty overwhelming in what they wanted, what they needed to help their instruction throughout the school day. Do we have any other, do we have a motion? That we purchased kindergarten Chrome Books as presented? So we have a motion, Sharita, do we have a second?
I'll second.
And Danielle? And so we're now have this on the table for questions. Steve?
I just want to make sure that I was clear last time that I did not want Chrome Books and that within the kindergarten sand. I'd rather have pencil and paper. I still stand by that, so I will vote no on that.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll make a comment. I also just can't support this. I do really appreciate the follow-up information that we received, hearing from the teachers.
That was great.
And I appreciate the extra work that went into that. I just hear us talking about a directional shift towards, particularly with our youngest, and these are the youngest of our youngest, for the most part, about going away from how much technology we maybe have used, and trying to balance that out a little bit. And had this been proposed as something other than one-to-one, I, you know, probably wouldn't have thought too much about it. But for the cost of this item, and it being one-to-one, and with us also making a commitment to them using these very little, I don't, I can't justify a need to purchase them on a one-to-one basis. Were this to fail and come back as some other proposal that had, that was a better balance of spending the funds to the actual amount of time that we would be using these in the classroom, as I'm hearing it from our staff, then I could possibly support that. But on a one-to-one basis for 553,000, I don't see that as being aligning our budget with our commitments.
Okay, any other comments?
Just thank you for getting feedback from the actual educators who are in the classroom. Given that almost 89% of them have requested one device for each student, I will, I will be voting yes in favor of this today.
I've talked about this a lot, but I, I want to, I appreciate that information that was provided to us. I think if, if we had unlimited funds, then I could see there being a place and being able to provide every tool, however little it is used. But unfortunately, we live in a time that we don't have unlimited funds, and we have to use what we have in the best way. And so I, well, come as to no surprise, can't support this.
Hey, any, anything else? So I will just follow up by saying that whenever our teachers request something that they feel like that they need to meet the needs of their children in their classroom, I'm going to support that. So I will be voting yes. So let's take it away. We're ready to vote.
Oh, no, it does not. It does not.
We have. Okay. Motion does not pass. We will not be purchasing these devices for our kindergarten teachers. Okay. Moving on. We will move to there are no change orders and agreements. And then we'll move on from our quarterly bond update. Very good, thank you.
Well, good evening, and this will be a fairly short quarterly update because we are down to two. And we are less than a month away from having these students in Jarrett and York Elementary, so we're excited about that. They'll be in there Monday after spring break. You've seen this, I can't move the circle any further to the right, but it's amazing when you look at this chart, and I'm so proud of what the team has accomplished in the last four years with Proposition S and the $168 million that was granted to the district through the vote. And it's been so rewarding to be able to work through this process with them and see really the lives that have changed from these construction projects. Again, here's our chart. This is when our expectation of projects to be completed is where, as well as where they're located within our school district. And finally, before we watch the most updated Progress as Promised video, I want to make sure I will show you the financials. You will see that that available number over there at 2.89 million is down, and that's because of the commitment that you all made to hiring and getting architects started on design for both Pipkin and Reed Middle School, as well as the storm shelters at Pittman and Watkins, and then also some of the engineering costs that are associated with our civil engineers to do that work. And so that, that's why that number is down, Solly, from four down to that 2.89. We will have an update at the March 28th meeting on more financials as we close out. Get very close to closing out Jarrett and York at that time with all of those things. So we'll continue to update you on this, and then with a final quarterly update on the 2019 bond projects will come in May, as we have all those projects wrapped up. So, without further ado.
Hey, Trip.
Yes?
Before you go any further, I just want to say thank you very much. You deserve it. For that effort, I appreciate it.
Hey, so that really concludes my update. Questions? I can answer for you?
So there's a highlight for us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the next time, you won't be the one doing this?
You will. Well, I guess you will.
You won't, so I guess this is kind of bye. On this?
I'll give the last one in May.
What was that?
I'll give the last one in May.
You will be doing the last one in May? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. This time, we're moving on to 12.01. Dr. Lathan, do you have any updates for us?
Just a reminder, and I know you'll also share, that we have SPS University scheduled for March 23rd at Central High School. Also, information around Explore was emailed out on last Thursday. Please make sure you get students registered for Explore, and also register for kindergarten for the '23-'24 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Things to keep in mind. So we're moving on now to Board of Education discussion, Board comments. So at this time, do you have any board comments? Steve?
I want to touch a little bit on the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. There's been some discussion about that within our community and that. And, you know, there's always been something that touched my heart a long time ago. Anybody know Red Skelton? Yeah. He was a, he was a great comedian on television and that. And he had wrote a little something that he learned back when he was in high school from one of his teachers. So I want to read the meaning of the Pledge of Allegiance as presented by our Red Skelton, our comedian. At this time, and keep in mind, there was only 48 states when he has done this, when he had told his story. It says, "When I was a small boy in Vincent's, Indiana, I heard, I think, one of the most outstanding speeches I ever heard in my life. I think it compares with the Sermon on the Mount, Lincoln's Gettysburg Address, and Socrates' speech to the students." We had just finished reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, and he, Mr. Laswell, the principal of Vincent's High School, called us all together, and he says, "Oh, boys and girls, I have been listening to you recite the Pledge of Allegiance all semester, and it seems that it has become monotonous to you. Or could it be you don't understand the meaning of each word? If I may, I would like to recite the Pledge of Allegiance and give you a definition for each word. I, that's me, an individual, and a committee of one. Pledge, dedicate all my worldly good to give without self-pity. Allegiance, my love and my devotion. To the flag, our standard. Old glory, a symbol of courage, and when she waves, there is respect, because your loyalty has given her a dignity that shrouds freedom, or shouts, freedom, excuse me, is everybody's job. Of the united, that means we have all come together. States, individual communities that have united into 48 great states, 48 individual communities with pride and dignity and purpose, all divided by imaginary boundaries, yet united in a common cause, and that's love of country, of America. And to the republic, a republic, a sovereign state in which power is invested, and to the representatives chosen by the people to govern. And the government is the people, and it's from the people to the leaders, not from the leaders to the people. For which it stands, one nation, meaning so blessed by God. Under God, indivisible, incapable of being divided. With liberty, which is freedom, the right of power for one to live his own life without fear, threats, or any sort of retaliation. And justice, the principle and qualities of dealing fairly with others, for all. For all that means, boys and girls, it's as much your country as it is mine." And I brought with me, because I wanted to share with all of you, these are some, some precious books to me. It's like a dear book, like we might have in school. This is what we call a cruise book. And what happens with the cruise book is we kind of tell a story when you go out to sea, and you go through different conflicts or battles or something like that, and just sail along the countries that we may have conflict with, or is it that we serve our country, the flag of the United States of America? What many people don't know is, part of, in this cruise book, is a list of people that have passed, serving their country under this flag. And this is our memorial. And these are names of people that I've worked with, that I've served with, for our great nation. I would encourage each and every one of you to understand, it's not just about yourself. It's about the people that have served before us, and yet the people that you want to serve and coming for us. And I wanted to share that with you. I'd be happy to share these with you at later time and that, but I just want you to know I have. And I think it's very important to recognize those that I served with that have died for that flag.
Are these the vessels you served upon, Steve?
I've served on USS Kitty Hawk, USS Independence, USS Midway twice, USS Enterprise.
I see that on the side.
Yeah, I don't have them all here, I can't carry them all, but I just wanted to bring some of them, share, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent. Anyone else? Anyone else? So we've heard, Steve, anyone have anything else this time? Board comments?
Thank you for your service.
Okay, there I am.
At the end of the last meeting, Kelly talks about discipline, and I just wanted to echo his sentiments that he had expressed. We all know that discipline is a bear that we're going to have to tackle, not just for our students, but also because, as we learned, all of us, it is a driving factor for us to be able to attract and retain the best talent that we can. And so I just wanted to put my voice out there. And I also discussed this with Dr. Lathan, but I would like to, I wanted my fellow board members to know that I'd also asked to see a plan ready to be executed for the following academic year, so like by August or whenever it is that we're getting ready to get it going again. I just wanted to share that with you, that I had that conversation.
Thank you.
Comment following up on that. Thank you for reiterating that. And I will also, again, reiterate, I do think it's important that we see a plan entering the next school year. And I hope that the rest of you can join me in that. And I, and I know that might be a tall order for our staff. But I'm hoping it's something that we can get behind and do our best, even if it makes us uncomfortable to meet earliest possible deadline we can. And then in addition, thank you for sharing your words, Steve, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
May I make a comment?
Sure, absolutely.
I appreciate the need for some discipline. We definitely all know that there is a need for revision of our policies and to come up with a plan for addressing discipline. However, I do not want to force our administration to come up with a plan hastily that doesn't allow for them to make a plan that's going to work. So we force their hand to make a plan. And I know that they're working on it. I don't think they care about it any less than we do. I think it is something that our administration cares about, including our superintendent. And I trust that the district is working on a plan. I would like to see one implemented as soon as possible. But to put a timeline on a plan for discipline, which is a huge overt, undertaking, I think that we need to allow for the plan to proceed in a manner that allows for a plan to be developed sufficiently. That's just my opinion.
Okay, very good. Any other comments? Okay, great.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, Scott, sorry. We, we have a 10 C for getting back. Go ahead.
All right. I mean, as I, today and tomorrow and Wednesday and Thursday, I mean, you know, I was sitting in a room full of Navy veterans. They made the best power plant employees that we have. Seriously, Steve, thank you for what you said, and thank you for your service. Star Patrick, I truly appreciate it.
Thank you, and God bless you.
And, anyway, thank you. I think it's as hard to do just from afar, but thank you for hanging in there.
Okay, excellent. Okay, well, moving on to, I think we're, okay, moving on to plus delta purpose statement. I think that's where I am. Oh, no, I have upcoming meetings. Sorry. So our next meeting will not be until March 28, 2023, and it will be a combined session. So board members, please keep in mind that the administration will do their best to get us all the information as quickly as they can. But we will have to set aside that time to make sure we do our homework because we won't have as much time to get our questions to the administration and get them ready to go. The reason for our combined session is we have spring break on March 13 through 17. And then don't forget, SPS University is March 23. So I'll move that, moving on then to 14.0 plus delta. So if you have any plus delta items for this evening or this meeting, please write them down and give them to our board secretary. Then as a note, that we do need to go into executive session. Our board needs to meet exec session. A recommended action is the Board meeting exec session to discuss legal, real estate, personnel, and student matters as provided in Sections 610, 021, 1, 2, 3, 6, and 13, our SMO. Have a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion.
Second.
Steve?
All right.
It's okay.
And a second by Sharita. Let's vote, please. Or do we need any questions?
I could say one more thing if I could.
Jump in there. Go ahead, Scott.
Thank the staff, Dr. Lathan, the first staff, and all the teachers out there, all the work they do, the springtime of the schools and the students. I appreciate all the schools and students and people at the schools. And congratulations to, you're taking over for John Mulford. I think we really, it's announced now, so we can officially say it, but congratulations. I think Dr. Lathan made an excellent choice. And Dr. Mulford, a really, a really good mission.
Amen.
He's going to be around for a while yet.
He'll be great.